In public discussion on any other move agenda, agenda on minutes.
Good church system. Lot of people.
Maritola was filled and the little brother.
Actually it was baptism time.
No, next Sunday. No. Another Sunday was the sixth. The Thursday and May.
Sort of surprised me that you've been around church maybe more than I'm sure since I came out.
Nelson and them were calling and.
Where'd they go?
I don't know. I never did.
They were going somewhere. You're actually there already?
Levina and I'm where we're calling. Mom and Rory, I don't know what happened. I called her that morning and she said, "See you in a little bit," and they weren't there.
Oh, well, well done.
And, um. I don't know, Emily kept us on.
Entertainer?
Entertainer.
How'd she get to church? She go off?
No, no. Chariot.
Shalagoa.
No, no, no.
That's New Arjia.
Yeah. Oh. What's the other one's name? All of them are mom.
All of them are mom.
Uh-uh.
What is her name?
I don't know. At least Jerry and Michelle are getting a little bit by now. Every time she do something, it's like.
Oh, she bumped her head. Burn up and she was falling onto burn and Burn was pulling her finger out and she lost her balance and bumped her head and Jerry ran out of the church with her.
Oh, so they're gonna cry.
Yeah. I'll send the other two.
Find one. Hansel.
Yeah. It didn't matter who Devaya went to. Kinsel was there and they were, she was on their lap.
She's not, not here for her so much.
She finally took Jessica by the hand and told her, "You go to the tent with me."
Yeah, well, we obviously were there the first day they got them and she kept, everybody that came in, "Go to my room, go to my room." That's plain night because they had to fence up so they could. I'll make it most approved.
Take it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guess you have salt too.
Paint real worn.
We got them all signed.
We already got them all signed. Make it most approved.
Sick. All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, once you got them all signed.
Yep.
Even though. Though in the middle. In case you actually get into the store. Sir, setting up.
We're still waiting. She hasn't signed the lease yet.
There's signs still in Elba.
Yeah, she's still, she'll still be open through Saturday there, so.
She's gonna be set up in a week.
And that's finals week. You know who will be setting this store up.
Taking a week of vacation this weekend.
Pretty much.
Hey, but it's in Cherokee now that, now she has a sister close, I can probably light all the weekends.
We was building the dog bin yesterday and I said, "Nicole, what is that?" And she come around, she is allergic to bee stings. And there's honeybees in her wall at the house.
Here?
At, at her house down here, this little Cherokee. So I called Fred and glad and poor are gonna come get them sometime this week. Wow. Make it a little sooner than later because she's allergic. I said, "Well, tell her to leave them alone." That's crazy.
Who's Devaya called too? Because you called someone to take them away or just.
Foster kids, the occasion can turn it out. What's the little boy's name? I cannot think of it.
No, foster kids. And our brother?
I can't think of, um. Oh, good grief. But unusual, unusual also. He's a little chunker.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they said he was malnourished. I'm thinking.
Where?
He's not malnourished now?
Malnourished for the right stuff.
I guess. He didn't look, he didn't look skinny.
No, no.
By the way, old bees. I saw the Kinsel and Zaden and all, and I'll get you at the game Friday in LA. Make Kinsel look, it's not feeling good. Trent only took Zaden to her care on Saturday.
Double your eviction again. Yeah, Kinsel was hoarse yesterday. Her throat was.
The whole time she was at the baseball game, she was sitting on, she was under his coat, sitting on, down on.
Look, just what they need, juicy kids.
I mean, okay, she plans way in ahead, so she's already trying to make sure that, figure out where they're going on vacations so that if they still, if they still have them, they can take them.
She already told me that, I'm like, "Oh, I'm taking all of it."
I'm pretty sure we're gonna, we're gonna be gone on vacation this weekend.
That's what, when I have those two little boys, that's the first thing I told them, I said, "Um, I've already done my non-refundable." Have them, because we was going snow skiing and.
You're a pride.
So, we'll see here.
Which that worked with you on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other brother's moving from Moreland to Shattuck to be preacher out there.
Oh, wow.
And so they said, he said this weekend they took a load, they were taking, gonna take a load out there. They got out there, they had their own water leak. I don't know if it's in the house or somewhere, but they had to break out a whole bunch of concrete. They're supposed to be moving in the next, in the next month. He said, "I hope they get a fixers, you gotta borrow these in malls." Camper truck, park it right in front of the church. And that might make it move quicker. Well, it's probably got pipes and cement, right? So they had to. They had to bust out the cement. Probably won't find this once you got one leak, they're probably, a whole lot more, uh, more, more, where to where now? They're, they're, they're moving, he's trading jobs. My niece is supposed to have her tonsils out first of May, I think third. Looks like Moreland to Shattuck though, or Shattuck to Moreland? Moreland to Shattuck.
All right. Zaden may have a tonsil party together then, because it's an interface that, uh, new tubes and.
Okay. I'm sure Grandma will go out there and spoil them.
Sure.
Your mom will spoil them somehow. Should buy them all the ice cream they want. I don't think my grandma did, I think my mom did, my mom is now doing to them.
It's not the same people that raised us, that's why I tell everybody. It's not the same woman that raised us. We would've started off and she would've smacked us. Grandkids can do no wrong. When they're great kids, grandkids are even worse.
Tell that ghost. Niece is having quite a go, I don't know if you figured it out yet, but, uh, well, no. I keep talking about, my grandma, my grandma mother, she used, every time you had a shot, she'd give you like a dollar or five dollar or something. Just every time you had to go to the doctor, she'd give you a buck. So I keep talking that about. They also, they'd also be foster care, do my other brother, both brothers do now, do foster care. They, uh, so if I be moving to a new house, it's gonna have to get approved again.
Oh, have to process again, okay.
You got two brothers? Mm-hmm. Actually, you know Trent, I guess.
Trent's sister also.
The other brother Darryl, right?
Brother Darryl. Brother Darryl.
He was all.
My other brother.
Mm-hmm. I don't think down Trent. I think Trent's still.
What was that show where the?
He was the.
The brother went to visit an old motor home and dumped his safety car. That was, that's what my brother always says, "When you coming to visit?" What's that guy, he calls me by that name?
Tricky Titties.
Yeah, and I'm the other one, my brother. I'm gonna do it to him this summer too. I got an old motor home all set up to go, but we're gonna pull right up in front of his house.
Give you the tank?
I'm gonna at least put the line in his gutter. Threaten.
But you can, you can compare, I think it was, when Trent was ten or something, you compare to my, my grandma mother, you couldn't tell the picture apart.
Really?
They look so much alike. Kelly's the one that's a little like you, buddy.
Actually, I think she looks like your mom.
She's weird because she's hot.
I know. I didn't believe it when I come down, like, "Oh, she looks like my mom."
If I ever wanna get candid and brave and just rile it up a little bit, I said.
Yeah. Everybody thinks we're twins.
Don't call Eddie. Don't call Eddie.
Yeah, that's the argument. Once the bids open for that station.
Uh, Lord of the Chapter, next week is the parking lot and then the next week is the U.S. We electronically sent them to another bidder, um, Barry.
Barry.
Listen, if he called last week and I said, "I can rent you a copy," or I said, "If he can sell it to you at a profit," oh, that would be great.
Barry paid for last, last week, I guess. They had to deal with the, the fairgrounds and it lists every item different. Cement, the kitchen, and this, and a different company, I go, "What the heck?" Why would they bid, you know? Wouldn't you just bid that as one company? Well, that's what I'm saying. So contract that up? Yeah. That'd be a lot to keep track of. Well, can you get the Barry, lose paper stuff, can you get it? I probably can, yeah. Yeah, look at that. I mean, every item's different, different name and whatever. I probably have a connection on there. Yeah. I don't read it. Actually, I do read it. I just look at this article to see what I can steal. I'm just paper, plus five papers. I like to read somebody's articles, they're staying long. I asked, I said, "What are you gonna do this summer?" He's like, "Why?" I said, "You're not gonna have a long deal." He's like, "I know, I'm gonna find another thing to fill it with." Yes, it should be a better term key deal, I would think, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
You wouldn't have, we wouldn't have.
I would, yeah.
Yeah.
Because once you, if you're just going through a contractor. Yeah. You don't have to, you don't have to check the individual people. Unless that's, or going through, not every, the whole thing, unless that's going through a contractor, these people bidding that to the contractor.
Can they publish that though?
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't go with either.
So they get a cheaper, they better, but I don't know.
Oh, yeah. I wonder what their, what's their sales tax down there? Yeah. Barry's completely differently, I think.
Oh, that, that'll work.
They haven't seen that much money for fairgrounds. Well, I happen to pick, even earlier picked up on using sales tax money to pay for, help fund the fire department.
Right. That'll work.
And see Garfield, Garfield, Canada, there's such a small amount.
That'll be fine.
Much more.
Thank you. Bye.
But you're also, their biggest department is Enid and Enid is funded by. City of Enid. I don't know what their fire department, but the Fitz Farm has like a $10 million venture or something. High, made out.
Give me down for more candy. I'm not quite stretching my shirt enough yet.
I'm gonna pull it this way so we.
You already wanna buy these shirts over fit.
In case you, be careful where you're aiming when you're popping them. Kelly did say her new computers work a lot better. All right, thank you, sir. I think they were like 2007 ones or something like that, one they got rid of. Yeah.
Twenty-third. On my blood.
No, guys, fine.
Yeah.
I heard he bought the Stanley House for Joe. Heard he bought the Stanley House for Joe.
Really?
I've heard a lot, he was putting up the 20,000, about 19 acres that house.
What did he bring, Toby?
I heard, I don't know what it brought, I heard it was putting up 20,000 for anybody to bid.
Really?
I heard Jay Hague, Jay Hague.
Yes.
Yeah. Jean DeWitt bought it for Joe Parks.
Oh, really? That won't surprise me.
Like, how much it, yeah, that brought or whatever. I know the 80, north of town, the little blacktop there.
Jersey.
WG and Chris.
Whitehead Tucker. Oh, that's Toby, right.
Suppose the 120 across from Bullers, that, that Kreis that lives on the Kim line, bought that, half section, I haven't heard.
You already got it, sorry.
But it wasn't too.
Had a brain.
Because, I don't know about the house in town, it's, it's old.
Yeah.
There's only 900 and some thousand, and suppose they owe two in the end, yeah. They had to go shoot their son, their youngest son. I think the other son, it's not that bad. No, Sean's not.
Sean, no.
Somebody might, right now, it's not selling very high for it, man. He told me that there's some land that gets sold out by Brad Richard. I got a deal so very high.
No.
They got some sheep, some land out there.
That house and 20 acres there on the.
Or 23.
Dairy farm, bought 20,000.
Bought it.
Gary Kay.
Guess you're starting to sign those up.
I didn't.
What was his first name? Gene, Jim, yeah. They had a dairy right there on the pavement for years. They moved to town here where Sonny Dog lives for a long time.
You mean across three? Is it Allen?
No, no, where Sonny Dog lived, that's where they, Henderson's moved to town in that house. So, after quite a few years ago.
Okay.
By the way, the land's here.
She's late.
Judge?
Yeah, the judge bought.
Go ahead.
Half section, uh, two quarters, I think.
Pretty cheap, that stuff.
Yeah, it went pretty cheap.
She must've been late and swept her lawn.
No.
Literally.
But that half section, no, the terrace is as far from renewal part, I mean, it should be left in grass, then you can plant a tree, get it up, and get screwed. His mom and dad would run on.
Get they get them.
I'll make it most approved.
Second. All in favor?
Somewhere down there in those.
Don't worry.
What?
That, my head. Took mine and.
There's two right there.
Oh, that's To, oh, I thought that was Toby. I kept pushing that up there for Toby and.
Why don't we, I'll be this mind right here.
You know, Lord for betterment.
Huh?
If you do it.
Oh, we already did that.
Ambulance.
Blanket, yeah.
Toby doesn't stand up.
I bet first time today.
There's for three. They just need to be, you know.
No, 'cause I know those ambulance.
Time to talk, wrote mine too.
Those all district ones?
They can begin there.
Now there's crack here. Don't send them. There'll be a big old pile of them.
Will they go back?
Yeah, they come back, I just. The threes come over here.
Yeah, and these are.
Ambulance.
All right, let's go back, oh, yeah. All you had, all you have is just these two threes, right? First time in a long time I've slept all night.
Well, I slept good last night.
Didn't have no weird stupid dreams or anything else or whatever?
I took my bag, so I wouldn't roll out of bed.
What?
What time is it in Earlville, Toby?
Pretty late.
Okay, all right, you're telling me that.
What, you roll out of bed or your wife pushes you out of bed?
Could be.
Picks him out of bed.
Could be.
I don't know why, why you keep rolling out of bed?
Yeah.
I don't know how to stop you from doing that.
Don't understand.
That's one. There's one in four. One in four. Thank you.
Gives you a little doggy bed to lay on.
Gonna make a soft place where I land.
Thank you, sir.
If I'm gonna be a dogged about that day, god. If I'd roll that bed on one side, I'd be between the wall and the bed. It would be good. I do the floor and probably ain't, I'd have to jump in my room. Well, unless I hit the floor, my head hits a little.
This is just for you.
Stuff I had to put, put steel have there or stuff on it. Been a long time, go put the alarm clock right, get up, go shut it off.
I'll make the motion. Take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Road crossing for me. I'll make the motion. I bet you would, yeah.
I'll second it.
All in best. Straight west down here or down around the land?
Stands.
Man, yours is, yours is on top, man. Did we hide that one? Yeah? Road crossing, did we hide it?
Yeah, we hired it. Oh.
You made the motion, I seconded it, we, you say all in favor?
We hired it.
Okay, we hired it?
Yeah.
All right.
You were asleep.
What?
You slept too hard last night.
I slept pretty hard.
Yeah. Reckon they need that? Probably, probably need.
You dropped an I-bid there for a story. Put a light away, let it go, clock, it's four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, let's see. All with the deeds.
I'm kind of, put on my hearing they got this morning.
They were just, the family decided they didn't ask them.
3:26, 11.
You can tell who ties the church. About where those things pop up and moving around.
Bet, yeah.
I can tell you a story about that, but better not.
All right, next one, Jake.
Open bids for remodelling existing restaurants in Exeter Village out south of County Fairground. We don't have any bids. So we'll have to re-bid, correct?
Yeah. Now, if they don't bid again, we go out on quote, right?
Quotes, yeah. You'll have to go somewhere and get more plans because none of those are on the script, big huge pieces of paper that I can't make copies of, so. You'll have to, so I don't know whether they'll be ready next week to go out again or not, just depends on how long it takes them to.
So we just table it next week?
No, well, it's on the agenda anyway. Besides papers and.
It's huge.
Yeah, it's huge. Bigger than.
It's a great, great, great big deal.
Yeah.
They'll have to take them from burning.
Yeah, that's what he, that's what they had to do the first.
So we're just gonna wait?
No, they called them, they can't come up.
So we're just gonna wait till. Richard might be able to, first one's last round.
Burn ban. It's on, it's on. The governor's still got one on, so we don't need to worry about.
There's no action on that?
We should take ours off.
Can we, can we split the county?
Huh?
The governor's burn ban still supersedes any county.
Yeah.
True, I'm gonna burn trash and I don't care.
I don't.
Paper trash.
Yeah, we don't, well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
Put a tub over the top of your barrel so you don't get in trouble.
Not a plastic one.
Supposed to rain Tuesday, Wednesday.
We'll, we'll take care of it after that.
Whatever.
It's on, it's on, so no.
No, actually, the last update on the governor's was the, it was February 23rd, so I don't know when she'll update hers again.
No, hers is still on, it won't do us any good to take ours off.
Yeah.
I've got some piles I need to burn, that's. Resolution, contracts, agreement, renewal, ETR funds, and project, go on, so.
There's two copies there, we'll send them an original and we'll keep an original. I guess Toby's waiting on, hold on, maybe it'll come back.
Hope it does come back.
Yeah.
Where's, where's the project at?
Can't tell you.
Toby, where's the project at? Her house. It's a jet.
That bridge is a jet.
Yeah, but we don't, but we don't know on the burn ban.
Well, there's no action, so.
Okay, okay.
Do we need to? So what's, what's in effect is it's still good till the 30th, right? Still being dated.
I don't care if her does or not, we can take ours off. Okay.
We can put that in the, in the minutes.
Hers is still on, 'cause you just didn't, yeah.
Do you wanna take a vote on that, on the no action then?
I'm gonna take no action. Makes it hard that way. I like to butter the other one.
Hell, I know.
That's what we need to do. If the governor's burn ban's still on, then I second.
Okay.
All in favor?
I mean, nail it.
Yeah, I nailed it.
Oh, right.
Our bid shot after a little while, so this will be this week. Jake?
Although she takes hers off tomorrow, tonight, what are y'all gonna do then?
I'm gonna cry. I don't think she's going to, it's not all out. It's gonna be out, out there totally.
Well, we have the burn ban back on Monday's agenda as well.
Yeah. Can't be that much fire left out there, it's probably just table or stuff like that.
Where's she sent it though? Of course, we said that the, the Rayo Fire is seventy-five percent contained. Where it's still going, I don't know.
Bottomman Canyon and Cree Falls and...
And hay bales, they're gonna, hey, it's gonna smolder for a month or two, see, that's the thing, that's how they do it. Okay, we'll burn paper trash if it gets any bigger. We'll do it yesterday with Windsor.
Windsor's kinda cool yesterday.
Here we go, the contract.
We didn't vote on the resolution yet. I moved, we set the resolution.
Second.
All, all out of it.
Favor, aye. Any other seen bid, move we go.
I'll second that.